Okay, folks. Is this Han? They tell me this is Han. Yep, there it is. Good morning. I'm Ruth Galanter, President of the Los Angeles City Council. And it is my pleasure to welcome you to the dedication of, the rededication of the council chambers in the real City Hall and the dedication of these chambers to the memory of our very good friend, John Ferraro. What we're going to do here this morning is we're joined by Mayor-elect Jim Han and by Pat Gobbler, the loyal Chief Deputy of Mr. Ferraro, who's probably been in City Hall longer than all of us. As well you might. And Mr. Ferraro's sisters are here with us as well. So what we're going to do is I'm going to turn the mic over to Mayor-elect Han and then we're going to John's sisters and Pat Gobbler and Jim Han and I are going to pull the ropes here and we'll officially open the doors and then we're all going in. And then we're actually going to, hold on, folks. We're actually going to have a rather brief, but a real council meeting. So with that, welcome. And let me turn the mic over to our new mayor, Jim Han.
Thank you very much, Council President Galanter. Welcome, everyone. You know, it was over 50 years ago that I first came to the council chambers. You can imagine when my--
Your mother's belly.
Yeah, well, no. When my dad did bring me here when he was a councilman and sat me up on the desk. So I remember over the years as I came to the council chambers, I thought that it was the largest room I'd ever seen. It's shrunk a little as I've grown, but it is still one of the most beautiful places in the city of Los Angeles. And I'm very excited about the rededication in the memory of John Ferraro.
Thank you. I left out-- I left out because he was so busy working, John's other lieutenant, besides Pat Gobbler, Ron Deaton, our legislative analyst, who is also going to join in the official rope pulling. So if the rest of you guys will clear a path here, we're ready to get this show on the road. Five, four, three, two, one. Don't get tangled in that, Jim. Okay, are we ready? Here we go. We actually are going to have a formality here. We have a formal meeting to conduct in order to make this real. Then we go back to celebrating. Ladies and gentlemen and former council members, in an effort to bring a little order out of all this chaos, let me first invite our council members to take their seats and our new council members, who will be council members in another couple of days, to sit in the front row. Yes. And I'd like to invite our mayor-elect to join me up here if he wishes to do so. I know you're going to love hearing this, but according to the screen here, we have seven members and we need three more for a quorum. Just so you'll remember where we are. Okay, we now have a quorum. We have the quorum. If we had a little decorum, we could get on with the meeting. Okay, are we ready to go? If I can have the current council members somewhere close to their desks and the incoming council members join us up here, if you wouldn't mind the rest of you making a little room for our new council members? The new ones? Yeah, where are they? Oh, there we go. Just park yourselves behind the rest of the council members here. I see one new council member. Where are the rest? Yeah, so I can imagine who should be. Rocky, you want to come up? Sit over here. You might as well be up on top. Okay, we're now going to try to actually call this meeting to order. I know this is an interesting challenge. Good morning. This is a special meeting of the Los Angeles City Council on January 28th, 2001. We're back in the real City Hall. One of the items of business on the agenda this morning is to rechristen this, the real City Hall. And that is why we are having a formal meeting. So let us start by asking the clerk to call the roll.
Bernsen, Chick, Fuhr, Gersdai, Hernandez, Holden, Misekowsky, Pacheco, Padilla, Ridley, Thomas, French, Wax, Walters, and Galanter. Twelve members present and a quorum, Madam President.
Thank you. Isn't that exciting? And it is close to 10 o'clock. All right, we have a number-- we're joined this morning by a number of people who have been members of the council, by other elected officials, by friends, family. The Ferraro family is here, many of them. I think probably not everybody, but a lot of them. And we are-- we have a very limited agenda. I think it will take a very long time if I read everybody's name, but I hope that you will all take the opportunity to have a reunion. It's nice to see you all here again. And there's some people I haven't seen for a very long time. Actually, well, I'll try it. Let me read through the names of the people I know are here. If I miss anybody who's here, I'm sorry. And just wave your hand and we'll get you in too. Among the people we have the honor to welcome this morning are from the Ferraro family, Bob and Carol Baker, Dawn and Morgan Most, Rose Bosiglio, Mary Mercante-- Mercadante, sorry. I only know her by her first name. We're also joined by Supervisor Yvonne Brathwaite Burke, former council member Marvin Browdy, former council member Dave Cunningham, former council member Ernie Debs, former council member Bob Farrell, former council member Joan Milky Flores, Supervisor and former council member Gloria Molina, former city attorney Bert Pines, former city attorney and comptroller Ira Reiner, former council member Art Snyder, and probably some others. Zev-- Oh, Richard Alatorre is here, former council member. Zev here as well? There you are. Supervisor and former council member Zev Yaroslavsky. They didn't highlight you here. I can't imagine why. And a whole lot of other people. First of all, I want to say welcome. I also want to say it feels very-- who else? We're also joined by Dave Fleming, the mayor of Vacaville and president of the League of California Cities. Really, there's lots of people here and I hope you'll all have a chance to get together. I do want to say that it feels very peculiar to me to be sitting in this chair because the entire time that I served on the council, John Ferraro sat in this chair. It is an honor to have the opportunity to follow in his footsteps or in his chair, in his seat, as it were. And we're going to now run through our very limited agenda. And then we have a presentation that Mr. Deaton is going to read. The first thing on the agenda is a motion to reconfirm the name of the John Ferraro Council Chamber. Mr. Holden, would you like to make that motion?
Can't see it. Therefore be resolved by the adoption of this resolution, the City Council of Los Angeles hereby commemorate John Ferraro leadership and service to the city of Los Angeles, the City Council Chambers Room of the City Hall as the John Ferraro Council Chambers. And I want to applaud that.
Hold on, we're going to applaud it one more time. Open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is unanimous vote. Now-- Yes, forthwith on that. The next motion we need is a motion to authorize the placement of the bust of Ferraro that you saw as we came in, in the council chambers. Mr. Bernsen, would you like to make that motion?
It'd be my pleasure to make that motion. Coming back to this chamber after being away brought back memories of the first days that I came here and John Ferraro and our friendship and the leadership that he gave to this council and this city. So it's my great pleasure to make that motion that we make this monument for him in the council chambers.
All right, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And that too is a unanimous vote. That will be important for people coming in in years to come saying, who's this guy, John Ferraro? And we'll be able to at least show him who he is. We need one more motion. And that is to declare resumption of the name of, what temporarily was called the old City Hall, as official City Hall, which means that City Hall will become City Hall East once again. So Mr. Hernandez, would you like to make that motion? On naming the City Hall? Okay, I am going to call for public comment. If you want to speak specifically on that motion, I'd be delighted to have you do that. If you want to speak more generally, I'll call public comment in a minute. Okay, we have a motion to resume the name of this building as City Hall and the other one as City Hall East. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is also approved, forthwith on that as well. Now, because this is an official meeting of the City Council, we are going to have a period for public comment. And I don't have cards, but just anybody who wants to make public comment, we will ask you to give your name for the record and you may make your public comment. And then we are going to have-- you might as well sit down, council members. We don't know how long this is going to take. And then we'll hear from any council members who feel they have something to say. And then when we're ready, we'll adjourn in memory of Mr. Ferraro and then we get to go party some more. So this is the time for public comment. Sir.
My name is Todd Hayes. And as usual, it seems that the City Council opens up with some aspect of illegality as far as the Brown Act is concerned. I requested a speaker's card. I was manhandled by the police, only rescued by City Councilman Mark Wrigley-Thomas. I should not meet a way in which we do business. This is still the property and the place where the public has an opportunity to deal with government. When government strong-arms its people, refuses to allow them to make any kind of comment, that is absolutely wrong. I hope the Chair will take care of that issue and see to it that when you have these special meetings, recognizing the Brown Act does provide for public comment, it's done correctly. I must chastise the Chair. I asked to speak on the item before you voted on it. Normally, you'd have to have a motion to reconsider because you would not allow public comment on item number three, even though I made that request. Now--
Sir, sir, I asked you if you wanted to comment specifically on that item or if you wanted to comment more generally and you turned around and walked away. You are welcome to comment on any item you choose.
Are you going to make a motion to reconsider?
No, I'm not going to make a motion. I'm just sitting here running the meeting, inviting you to comment.
Well, that examines propriety of how it should be executed. Anyway, my concern is why isn't this a scandal? Since the closure of City Hall, the Corvone School has been opened, Staples Center was conceived, designed, and built. And I would imagine the cathedral will finally be dedicated and open before we really get City Hall properly prepared to do its business. The cost doubled, then the cost tripled, and still we don't have a City Hall as operational. I would suggest that other people will pick up on this and point out that it is a scandal. Now, there are many construction workers who were very pleased they were able to send their kids through college in the time it took to get this place refurbished. There's still painting. The smell of paint is fresh in the air and we don't have a City Council. This is a way, unfortunately, the city of Los Angeles does its business. It's unconscionable, it is disgraceful, and we should make an apology to the public for being closed so long. Thank you.
Thank you. Next.
We're Nico and Theoma Loplos, co-founders of Kids Vice LA. We're looking forward to working with all you here. And we really like this new chamber. I'm very happy that this council chamber has been renamed in the name of Councilmember Ferraro. When we first started working with you three years ago, it was actually Councilmember Ferraro who introduced us to everything and showed us how everything worked along with Councilmember Hernandez. And it's just a great feeling knowing that you're going to walk through these doors and you're going to see his name up there. And we know some great things are going to happen down here and we're glad that we can be a part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, and that then closes the public comment period. And before we proceed, the next item, which does not formally appear on the agenda, is to ask Mr. Deaton if he would read the resolution that goes with naming this chamber for our friend John.
Hopefully this works. Couple things. One, first, as we walked in, I had the feeling that I needed to hear John Ferraro say, eight members present needing two for a quorum. And it was very nice to walk into this room, which I think represents what's the best about the Los Angeles City Council and to name it after a person who loved being its president and loved being the leader of this group. The resolution, I think-- normally the resolutions don't get read, but I think, given this one, that it would be appropriate. Whereas John Ferraro was a leader in all aspects of his life, a leader in the athletic world, a leader in the business world, a leader and a mentor for his family and for numerous friends, and most importantly, a leader in government. And whereas John Ferraro was president of the Los Angeles Police Commission in the 1950s and president of the Los Angeles City Council longer than any person in city history, his city service spanned five mayors, 65 council members. And whereas John Ferraro was the go-to person in City Hall to develop the consensus to solve the most recent crisis with humor, humility, and teamwork, he would get the job done. And whereas John Ferraro was one of a handful of leaders who shaped and guided this great city over the last half century-- half of the 20th century-- from Bill Parker and Dragnet to the Police Department Consent decree, riots and civil disorder to the Olympics and Staples Arena, earthquakes and other natural disasters to a steady stream of politicians, many of whom are represented here today. He was the all-American leader for Los Angeles and his role model as a leader will be one of his lasting legacies. Whereas because of that and much more, those who worked with him in and out of City Hall enjoyed and appreciated, loved and respected that noblest USD Trojan of the mall, John Ferraro. And John, we're back.
Well, so is John. All around us. Okay, members of the council, let's try it out. We might as well test out the system here. Anybody who wishes to make a short speech may press your button. Mr. Hernandez to be followed by Mr. Bernsen and Ms. Misekowsky, Ms. Chick. Okay, let's start there. We'll all get there eventually. Mr. Hernandez.
Madam Chair, members of the council and the public, I want to thank the current Council President Ruth Galanter for attempting to allow me to make the motion to name this City Hall. What you need to understand is this is the only building I've ever recognized as City Hall. And it took a while for me to understand basically what happens in this building in terms of the relationships and its relationship with the policymaking of a city. But I remembered that one of my mentors, one of the people who basically I started with by fighting and then understood that I had to learn from was John Ferraro. So it's an emotional meeting for me because that council president is the role model for the presidency. His ability to get us all to understand our power and how to use that power. But sitting in these chambers, for me, it's important that I reminisce on the fact that I know that all the pillars are made up of marble from different places of the world. And it was something I used to bring up because that was very representative of Los Angeles. The fact that Los Angeles is made up of people that come from different places of the world. And it's a destination point and then it becomes a home. And that's what is represented in this building and that's part of the challenge that always faces leadership. And as I stated before, when John Ferraro was talking to Latinos, he said those Latinos had to stick together. And he was a member of the Black Caucus of the City Council. And I guess he was a member of the tall members caucus. John was basically representative for all the people. And I think that's all what we all strive to do. Our reality is as a city, we have to remember that it's a city of people who are all trying to be part of what makes the quality of life here. And it's just been my honor to serve on the council. As some of my friends have said in the past, people forget real quick when you're a council member. But I wanted to point out as part of my closing remarks that one of the most phenomenal phone calls I got in my office was a thank you. And it's a thank you from Ernie Debs. This council member called me when we announced the Audubon Center, the $7 million facility going in on Debs Park. And he shared with me that every time a developer was-- going in at Debs Park, and he shared with me that every time a developer was late and basically complying with a track map, he took that land and made it park land, and that became part of Debs Park. And it was his colleagues who recognized his efforts by naming the park after him. And that was a part of history I never knew about. And I really appreciated that phone call, and I know the Audubon Society appreciated your donation. But thank you, Ernie.
Mr. Burnson.
This is a special day. Okay.
Mike, I appreciate your comments. I served for about 11 years in this City Council. I'm here today from about as far as you can get, Indian Wells, which is below Palm Springs, to pay tribute to my friend. For more than 50 years, John and I were good, good friends. I knew him long before he was a City Councilman. Indeed, I knew him before he was a Police Commissioner. I just want you to know how grateful I am for having been elected more than 30 years in public service. The state legislature, the City Council, which I love very, very much, and the Board of Supervisors. I want you all to know how grateful I am for being here on my, just past my 97th birthday. May I introduce the most important part of my body today, my son David. And Madam Chairman, I want to say to you and to all of you, being in public life and enjoying every moment of it, how many people have had opportunities. God bless you all.
Thank you. Thank you, Ernie. I do want to tell the rest of you, so you can think up what you want to say, that after we get through with the current council members and Mayor-elect Hahn, the mic is open for anyone else who wants to talk about this. Mr. Burnson, you're on.
Thank you. This is a very special day because I recall my very first day that I came down here, and I was really awed by this magnificent chamber. I mean, it is really something special. And many of the people who were sitting in that front row were here at that time, and some of them came afterwards. And it's a pleasure to see all of you. I think, I think, Ernie, you're the only one that I didn't serve with, although I didn't serve with Yvonne either. Yvonne, you were already in Congress, I guess, at that time, or supervisor, one of the two, or in between. But anyway, it is truly remarkable what a beautiful facility, what a beautiful building this is, and what a great job of restoration it has taken place. It was worth the wait, even though it was a little delayed. But as you look around, the spirit of John Ferraro will always be in this building. I think that this was his city, he loved it, he loved the council, he loved this chamber, and he treated all of us like, not just like friends, but like his children. We were like, almost like his children. And he will always be in this chamber. And John, this is a tribute to you. Thank you.
Ms. Mizikowski.
Thank you, Madam President. As Hal said, when I was first elected just four years ago, we were still in this building, so I was lucky enough to be sworn in here. And I would like to thank some of the current council members and some of the former council members, and particularly John Ferraro and Ron Deaton, for making this happen. We may be celebrating today, but there was a time when we weren't sure that we were going to restore this building. It wasn't clear whether or not the cost was going to be effective. And there was a commitment on the part of others, and I remember walking the halls one day when I was a staff member for Councilman Marvin Browdy, with John Ferraro and Rick Tuttle, looking at the building, making an assessment, Ron Deaton trying to determine, could we afford it, should we afford it, was it the right thing to do? And I'm here to say thank you to those people for making the right decision. I think we are all in awe again of having our symbol back, the legacy, the history, and how it is going to hopefully inspire and instill in us some of this sense of place, sense of importance in the city, and sense of importance of what we do as members of the council and other elected people. And I want to particularly welcome, it's so wonderful to see not only the former elected officials here, but like myself, for about 30 years of this building, former staff members who helped make the building, or the engine that make this building work and all of its functions, and I want to thank them. And I also want to make a particular point of thanking Ed Avila and Project Restore because the city said, okay, we're going to restore the building, and Project Restore came in and said, we're going to restore its grandeur. So thank you.
Ms. Chick.
Thank you, Madam President. I think by the time we all speak, we will cover all points. First of all, in terms of criticism of this project, the valuing of history is not something that in America, much less in Los Angeles, we are known for. But looking at history not only helps us form a sense of identity and togetherness and an ability to work as a team, but it gives us the ability to learn from the past and from our mistakes, which is exactly why, as the next City Controller, I'm going to be working with this City Council and the new City Council members, with our soon-to-be Mayor Jim Hahn and City Attorney Rocky Delgado, to learn from our past and absolutely take a review and a look at this project. But we know what it's given us is of great value, and if there's something to learn from reviewing it, we should always do that. I want to wish especially my successor in the Third Council District, Dennis Zine, who was here somewhere. He doesn't need good luck, but he's going to have an exciting next four years, as will all the rest of you. It's very emotional to get to be back here at least two more times. Many of you were here, I was the freshman class of term limit babies, and many of you were here waving hi when I walked in, and I knew you'd be waving bye when I walked out. But it's been eight incredible years, and even though I'm very excited about where I'm going and working continually with you, this is a special place, and you are all special people, and so is the public. And what the public deserves that we all serve is that the mayor, the city attorney, the city controller, and all 15 City Council members, as a tight team with our general managers, our city employee family, serve the people that we all serve well. Thank you for the opportunity.
I want to take a momentary break to apologize and, because I forgot to do so, and to introduce our incoming City Attorney Rocky Delgado, who is also here. Sorry about that. Okay, Mr. Savornich, you're next.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the council. You know, it's, for all of us, it's kind of a bittersweet day in that when each and every one of us walked into the room, the only thing that was missing was John smiling down from the chair at us. But I feel that he is here, and I'm sure everyone in this room feels that he is here. One of the things to which I am very proud is that, I think more than anyone realizes today, is that this room will forever, from this point on, bear his name. But I think John Ferraro did something this morning that he was known for doing for over 30 years. Look at all the people he brought here together today. From all walks of life, from all different persuasions, everybody made time out of their day, and they could have been anyplace else in this city, but they chose to be here. John Ferraro is with us because we're here. And Madam President, members of the council and council members-elect, I think the greatest testimony to John Ferraro here today is not that we put his name on the wall or on the room, is that John Ferraro memory brought us all together. John, we love you, we feel you, and even though each and every one of us miss you, we know that you will forever be within this room and forever in the hearts of everyone who takes pride in being an Angelino. Thank you, Madam President.
There are still seven of us who have something to say, but in the interests of initiating the new mayor into his new job, he's already discovered a scheduling problem, and so I'm going to ask everybody's indulgence here and that we hear next from our incoming Mayor Jim Hahn.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. You know, seeing Supervisor Debs here, former Councilman Debs, reminded me that I first came into these council chambers, I didn't even remember it, I was just a new baby. My dad was a 26-year-old City Councilman and a new father, and brought me to sit on his desk. Now, I don't remember that, although there's a picture of it, but I remember when my sister Janice, who's a new council member, and I came down to the Hall of Records, which was the seat of the county government across the street from City Hall, we would come into these chambers to see our Uncle Gordon Hahn, who was a councilman here for many years, who just passed away three months ago. And I remember thinking that this was one of the most magnificent rooms that I'd ever seen. It was much more impressive, by the way, than the Board of Supervisors hearing room that was across the street. And when I thought about what a great thing everybody's been talking about, the spirit of John Ferraro here, the other thing that is very strong here is the spirit of democracy. And this place is worth it. It is a shrine to democracy. And I know that everybody who's here feels that way when we're here. It does inspire people, it does inspire awe, and it inspires all the members of the City Council here because they know that it is that shrine to democracy, and that they are here representing the will of the people, and to be the embodiment of government of the people and by the people and for the people. And to dedicate it in the memory of John Ferraro, who was certainly a man of the people, someone who cared about people, is the right thing to do. And you know, there were some people who said, as Council President Galanter pointed out to me, some people said we shouldn't rebuild City Hall, it'd be too expensive, we ought to tear it down, maybe we should just relocate to one of these vacant, you know, office buildings downtown. What a loss that would have been. Thankfully, cooler heads prevailed, wiser minds decided that this is that shrine of democracy that we have to restore, and I'm just so proud to be here today. Think about all the memories that I've had and all the memories that are represented by all of you here in the room. John, I know you've been proud of this.
Thank you, Jim. Next up, Mr. Holden.
There was an old soldier once said, old soldiers don't die, they just fade away. But what we've done here today is to be assured that John Ferraro nor his memory will ever fade away by renaming these chambers in honor and memory of our friend, former colleague, John Ferraro. When people come to visit City Hall, if they didn't know, they will learn then about John Ferraro. And for those who are studious would read the history and the accomplishments and the service of John Ferraro. We lived in an ethnic diverse community for a number of years, but never divided under John Ferraro's leadership. He was chairman of the Black Caucus and told me that, though there were three of us, he had four votes. And of the Hispanic Caucus, of the Italian Caucus, which was a hard caucus for him to be associated with, with Ernie Bernardi, he would say that from time to time. But I must tell you that John was a friend, good friend of mine. I would hear people say that John would say to them, that if you're ever in the alley and you're about to get into a fight, have Nate Holden at your back, he'll defend you and protect you. That's true. Loyalty begets loyalty. So when I had, if I wanted to be in an alley and I had a tough fight, I'd want John Ferraro at my back. If you weren't there, I wanted Richard Alatorre. Those guys are, Burnson, never let you down. And that's why it's so important. I say to you that John and I had a lot of contests, one to the other on the council floor, he's challenging me and vice versa. And the only other person who would do that more than John Ferraro in the room today, Gloria Molina, so we don't, not naming after Gloria Molina, but geez, she slapped me one day sitting over there. Curse me, I can't tell you what those four-letter words she used. And asked me, what did I do that for? You play by the rules, and the rules say that you need 10 votes to hear a matter that's presented to the council. And I wanted to get even, so I was the one person who said no, put it over, and that's when she slapped me around. John Ferraro's sitting up there. You want to know, what was Gloria fighting with me for? But I must tell you that to the family, John and his friends, by renaming of these chambers, he will never be forgotten. He'll always be in our memory, certainly he'll be in mine. We will never forget you, John. Hang tough, thumbs up, we'll always be with you. God bless.
Mr. Pacheco.
Madam President, colleagues, for me, it's really an honor to be here the first time in any official capacity. I don't think I've ever, I think I've visited the chambers once before. Other than that, my other visit to this building was, I was before the Planning Commission when the Planning Department was recommending downzoning ball heights to make it, to maintain its residential status, and Dan Garcia was chairing. I was speaking on behalf of my mother, who didn't speak English, so I was saying some things, and Dan Garcia asked me, why does your mother believe that? And I told him that if I could explain my mother, I wouldn't be a lowly student, I would be a much more successful person. But the awesomeness of this building, the detail, one of the things that I did one time talking to Joe Soral, who I saw, who was around here, is I, in casual conversation, mentioned to him that I was 1/8 Italian. And with Mr. Italian, Joe Soral, is 1/8 is enough. So he has me on every list as an Italian-American elected official. And John and I would talk about the Italian Caucus, and when John passed away, Joe and I were talking about the fact that I'm the last Italian on the council. And then I said, but that's okay, because very soon, we're going to have our good friend and our good buddy, our Mexican-Jewish-Italian Eric Garcetti, who would revamp the caucus. The reason I bring this up is because one of the most important things that John taught and talked about, I know it was sort of joking, but was the fact about including everybody. When he When he talks about being part of the Black Caucus, the Latino Caucus, the tall person's caucus, it's really about including everyone. And we are now with a whole new council, a new mayor, we're on the verge of a new era in City Hall, a time when everyone is included, a time when, and I was really happy to see the mayor-elect talk about, this is a testament to democracy. Because when I taught poly sci at East LA College, I talked about one of the most important things about democracy is the balance and the healthy competition between the executive branch and the legislative branch. So I really look forward to developing a council-driven agenda in these halls in the spirit of the Ferraro-Alatorre-Yaroslavsky triad, of really getting an agenda that is a healthy competition with the mayor's office. And I really believe the new council is going to go in that direction. So for me, it's an honor to be here. And the last thing I'll say is, I know I only have two means in this chair, so I won't get too used to it. Thank you.
One thing we're all going to get used to is that citywide officials outrank us and Mr. Delgado also has a scheduling conflict, so with your permission, members of the council, I'm going to turn the microphone over to him and then we'll come back to the remaining five of us.
Thank you, Madam President. Not many people think that I'm Italian. Also, as a former All-American football player, some would say that I might be the legacy of Councilmember Ferraro, but I got to tell you that there is nobody, there is nobody that can fill his shoes, certainly not me. He's an amazing man. I have to tell you, look at this room. It's so, it's so grand, it's so majestic, it is larger than life. And if you had ever come to this chamber, or even the City Hall East Chamber, closed your eyes, you would have gotten that same exact feeling when you heard John Ferraro speak. His voice carried that same kind of magnitude, that same kind of gravity, and we will always remember it. Today, with this building, we can open our eyes, that's something else that John Ferraro did. He always opened up everyone's eyes to something very special. Thank you very much to John Ferraro, thank you very much to the future.
Next, Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam President. This is City Hall. And this is Council Chambers. We conducted business across the street for a couple of years, but this is Council Chambers. This is a special job that we have, serving as city council members. And I think one of the public concerns about elected officials and maybe city officials specifically is whether or not we lose touch, whether or not we lose the pulse of why we first wanted to run and serve and represent our communities. And I guess if you look at it one way, it may be easy to forget. If you look at the volume of council files and agenda items on a daily basis, if you look at the range of topics that we try to juggle each day, but it doesn't take anything more than maybe a child who comes to testify in committee or at a meeting, or the one special issue that you know is going to make a difference in somebody's life, or the sage wisdom of someone like John Ferraro to put what you consider a minor decision into a historical context, to remind you of just how special our job and our responsibility really is. And so much has been said about this building and about these chambers, and much has been said about the spirit of John Ferraro. And in my heart, I feel that this is the house that John built. Because just like church, government is not the physical structure that you stand in, but the people and the spirit that make up that building. And with the hearts and the souls that have been gathered here today, physically and the people who I know wish could have been here, that is a testament to the house that John built. I wasn't fortunate, as some of my colleagues were, to have been sworn in as council members and have conducted business across the street and to now rejoin this place as a council member. But I feel just so much apart because I was sworn in as a Building and Safety Commissioner right in that chair in front of me. So maybe in a slightly different way, I shared the history of these chambers too. And this is truly magnificent chamber. I can only hope that as we look forward to a new era in the city of Los Angeles and in city government, that our work should reflect the magnificence of these chambers, that we conduct ourselves with the respect and the collegiality and the bold idealism and the passion that is worthy of these chambers and of the people that we represent. There's much to admire in these chambers, from the pillars to the pews, to the arches and the flags, but there is one thing that I want to point out to everybody here today that has stayed with me ever since I was first sworn in as that Building and Safety Commissioner years ago. And that is a saying that is written above the doorway that we all entered through, something I want all of us to take away with us and contemplate throughout the rest of the day. And that saying is, "Law is reason without passion." Thank you.
Madam, Madam President, members of the council, ladies and gentlemen of the audience, Madam President, just a couple of points will suffice. I suspect all who are here today would want to join in giving a big round of applause to the city workers that helped us get in this building and make this happen. They worked, they worked extraordinarily, they worked extraordinarily hard. Many of us had the opportunity to witness this rather extraordinary project unfold. Some of those who provided leadership have already been named, but it has to be stated that appreciation is to be accorded, those men and women that established virtual United Nations when you walked through the halls to see this project being completed. Many of them are still doing so on the fourth floor as they complete the work of the council offices and other aspects of this building. The next point that I want to make is that I think this, the first meeting, somewhat ceremonial and certainly appropriate as a tribute to the late John Ferraro, has been authenticated in a way that we ought to be reminded. There was an exercise in democracy here today, not simply the votes that we cast, but those who wanted to be heard were acknowledged, were given the opportunity, they lodged their complaint, made their protest public, and it was appropriately acknowledged. Concerns were raised about the sergeant-at-arms doing the job that they are supposed to do, and they did it appropriately and professionally, and when intervention was warranted, they respected that. It seems to me that today's proceedings could and should set an example for how civility can inform the way in which these council proceedings and the deliberative process of governance can take place. And I certainly look forward to that for the balance of the time that we are able to share. Being the city council of the city of Los Angeles, great things can happen and I indeed expect that they will in fact happen. Thank you very kindly.
Thank you, Madam President. There is one difference between the council chamber in which we sit this morning and the chamber we left a few years ago. And that is that the council members no longer face forward, they face outward. They face the residents of the city of Los Angeles who come to petition us, to seek good government from us. I think it's a very important change. It was reflected in the city council chamber that we temporarily used across the street and now here. And I think it's especially indicative, actually, of the kind of service which the man for whom these chambers are being named today performed. From my experience with John Ferraro, and I really want to say this to the family of John Ferraro, you know, John, it seems to me, didn't run for office to be somebody. He was already somebody. He ran for office to do something. And there's a real difference between the two. And people run for office for both reasons. But this chamber needs to reflect in the actions that are performed by its members every day, is that spirit that was recognized when former council member and supervisor Debs spoke earlier. It is such a privilege to be able to perform this work and to wake up in the morning and to have one's only thought be, "How can we solve problems for people? How can we fix things?" And that, it seems to me, was at the core of the reason that John ran for office and at the core of what he did every day in serving the public. And those are the things that I wanted to say this morning. And I think that that's the kind of style and the kind of spirit we need to have, which is to recognize the power of public service, but to wield it with great humility. Thank you.
Two more. Next, Mr. Garcetti.
Madam President, members of the public, members of Mr. Ferraro's family, the press, my fellow current and future colleagues and fellow employees of the city of Los Angeles. I stand here as the last speaker because I'm the most recent council member, a council member of two weeks, which in an era of term limits probably makes me a veteran. Nevertheless, in this time of incredible change, we look back to the giants that have come before us. John Ferraro first and foremost, but so many of the people that are here, sitting with us, commuting with us, and those giants of the public, people who time and time again have come to this microphone, asking for our attention, asking for our consideration, asking to work with us. The costs of this project will only be worth it in each and every minute of our work, and the public will judge us by every minute. I know that we can all earn every cent that this building costs and that that history will not just be reflected, but it will be honored by the work that we do. Sir Isaac Newton was once asked, "How did you discover gravity?", one of the greatest discoveries ever in humankind. And he said, "Every day, I would just think upon it. And little by little, ray by ray, the sunlight would come through." Let us through our work each day, the public, those of us around this horseshoe, each be a ray of light so that this is not a castle on a hill, but the source of radiance. And in doing so, we will honor the man who this is named after, John Ferraro. And if each of us, on the day that we leave this council, these council chambers, and I know for some of us, it is very soon upon us, let us have the public say what they said about John Ferraro, which he was somebody who knew how to do the public's business.
One more. Eric, you're not the last. One of the downsides of being the chairperson of a gathering is you have to wait to speak at the end and everybody steals your speech. So I want to also take note of the hard work that was done to restore this building. Those of you who haven't been here for a while but served before may notice that the pillars are much lighter color than they used to look. I want you to know that these desks we sit at look kind of like the ones that you'll remember, but they're not the same. These were actually built by city workers because when we turned the horseshoe around, turns out the old ones don't fit. And so these are replicas, slightly adapted, that were made by workers of the city of Los Angeles, the people who sometimes get hated and vilified, but unjustly so. These are people who took great pride in their craft. The rest of the building will look just as good when we get the rest of it done. I also want to go back, several people have mentioned the various caucuses that John belonged to. And let's remember that part of the attraction of John Ferraro was not just that he was a great public service, but he was very human. And let me tell you, he would never proposed being a member of the Women's Caucus. And you can ask any of the women who've served, we have several of them here. The Women's Caucus was a whole different ballgame. All I can really add to what my colleagues have said is that I think coming back into this building will help to inspire us. It is wonderful to be able to see the members of the public without looking at that awful pillar right smack in the front, so that those of us up at the council horseshoe were looking into a wall and seeing the people before us on television. This is a whole lot better. I hope that we will find inspiration in John's commitment to do what was not necessarily of immediate political benefit, but was really focused on the good of the city. We have a city to govern, we are, as everybody has noted, in a time of incredible change, unprecedented change in the city government. Here in the city of Los Angeles, there will be lots of new enthusiasm and new energy coming into city government, there will be lots of problems for us to solve. But I think it is critically important that we remember that, what we really remember about John is that for all the, all the nice anecdotes and the things that are heartwarming, he always took the long view and said, "What is in the best interest of the city?" It's a lot easier to take that long view, I have to say, when you're in a chamber like this one, in a building like this one, than when you're in just some other office building. And so I believe that naming this chamber for John is not only a tribute to John, but to all the things he stood for and really is an inspiration to the rest of us and those who come after us. And with that, I would like to open the microphones at the center table to anybody else who would like to speak. If you would rather party, we will understand that, you can all speak to each other and to us one-on-one. If there's anybody else who would like to make a public statement, this is your chance. And if I don't see anybody move, I'm going to adjourn this meeting and invite you all to party in honor of John.[1760.04][1760.04][music]